Welcome.
Mayor Grimminter.
Here.
Alderwoman Codwell.
Here.
Alderman Couch.
Here.
Alderman John Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Donnie Stupi. Alderman Hook.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Ross.
Here.
Mayor, we have a forum.
Thank you. Approve of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proposed? Okay, we, uh... Under personal appearances, Kara Burke from Downtown Renewal. Hello, Kara.
And I just lost my wrist. Evening. I just wanted to give you guys an update on what Downtown Renewal was doing. I feel like we started off 2015 really strong. We had two really great events in February with the chocolate walk and the art walk. If you remember, the end of February was very cold and we ended up selling 21 tickets for the art walk at the end of February. So, we were very excited with that. That means we at least did our $100 donation for the featured piece. So, um, I think we've got some good momentum going. Uh, we're in the middle of a retreat right now with our board members really realigning all of our goals and doing a whole visioning. Um, and so, we hope to have that rolled out in a few months. It's gonna take a lot of work, but we've got some really good people on the board putting some, really, a lot of energy and effort into, um, the organization. So, um, also, just wanted to make you aware of some events that are coming up. Um, Fourth Friday Art Walk is this Friday, and we also have the high school, um, art show that's gonna be at the Welcome Center. So, thanks for allowing us to set, allowing them to set up at the Welcome Center. And, um, we have tickets. They're $5 for the art walk, and then we have the $100 featured piece at the end of the night that they can choose from. And, um, in April, we have another art walk, and at the end of April, the 24th, 25th, and 26th, we're doing a district-wide yard sale and merchant sidewalk sale. Um, so, we are soliciting and going around to the, the, the residents and asking them to have yard sales so we can just kinda have a little bit more formal, um, if they want to get in. This is something we're doing, kind of a neighborhood yard sale type thing. Um, and then the merchants are doing a sidewalk sale for their clearance items and whatnot. Um, the merchants had asked for something to happen in April because there wasn't a whole lot going on in April. So, that's the event that they came up with in the committee. And then we have French Festival coming up in June, and the French Festival Committee's really been working hard to expand that festival and have some new attractions in with that this year. So, we'll have an update on that probably next month with all the particulars. Thanks.
Um, Morgan.
Okay. Um, first of all, you know, everyone knows, the demolition of the two, uh, structures that were declared, uh, dangerous buildings and public nuisances was completed. Uh, I'd like to compliment the contractor, Sanford Ross. Not only did he get it done expeditiously, uh, he took great care to protect the public infrastructure, the sidewalks he was crossing. He made sure he was in contact with the neighbors and that they didn't have any surprises and he was aware of any of their concerns. It was, it was a first-rate job all the way around. Um, we, uh, you have a contract on the agenda tonight with, uh, bear engineering for inspection services on the trail. It's kinda the last piece that needs to be in place before we go out to bid. Uh, this is covered by the grant, so, um, it, it, those expenses were anticipated and included and will be reimbursed at 80 percent from the state of Missouri. Park Ward had a meeting, uh, Monday night. Tom was in attendance. Uh, there was discussion of the, uh, the budget and the, you know, what happens when we lose the maintenance of the ball field and what funds are available and what can be done with them. So, we kinda left that meeting with the understanding that the only real immediate savings that we, uh, will realize is the, uh, utility costs because the school will take over, uh, the utility. The, uh, the employees, we're not, they're gonna stay employed and continue to work so the city doesn't actually have money, uh, that we didn't otherwise intend to spend. It's just, will mean we won't fall behind midsummer in mowing anymore. We shouldn't. Um, but the utility cost savings, uh, as, as we antit, we anticipate them will be in the order of 20, well, $2,478.40, so we figured it out to the penny. Uh, so, the issue was whether, uh, that money could be reallocated in the budget and, and put into some other line item, uh, that, that could benefit the park. Uh, it's not a lot of money. Uh, I talked to Darren, uh, and he said, "Well, uh, we eliminated all landscaping," and that'd be a good amount of money to buy some mulch and do some things that he otherwise would not be able to do. So, uh, we have on the agenda tonight a, uh, budget amendment, uh, that reflects that, and, um, then we'll, uh, again, look forward to a more, when we, when we go into the next budget year, doing a better analysis of what their needs are and what funds we can, can dedicate to the park.
Excuse me. According to reading, uh, the report, are we gonna free up some money for some other playground equipment there also? Was that, is, and did I misunderstand that or what?
You did.
Can we address that in the budget, or in, excuse me, in the committee report? Because I wanna answer that.
Yeah. Okay. The, um, yeah, I reported at our last meeting that the Levy District was, uh, negotiating with Artisan. They, uh, have reached an agreement, so they'll be making the repairs to those, uh, gates so they can be moved out more easily, uh, as needed. Uh, it, uh, we've been discussing the, um, the railroads, uh, using the horns during through-town, middle-of-the-night disturbing people. Um, I included a policy statement that Petrie found, uh, for Union Pacifics to use the horns, and, uh, and I initiated contact with Bodot to, uh, to discuss what we could, what we can do. Turns out, there's one guy in Jefferson City who does this, and he's either on vacation or he's not good at returning phone calls. Uh, but I'm gonna talk to him about the possibility of a quiet zone. Uh, you know, what they require you to do, as I understand it, is, uh, you, you've got to make other improvements for safety if you're not going to use the horns. And Alderman Stupi had mentioned the possibility of a control arm there, uh, and that would be one of the things that you might do in order to, to, uh, to get them to, to, to agree to a quiet zone. Uh, what I need to find out is who's responsible for what, and, uh, that would, I will continue to pursue that. And, um, having your packet, a letter from, uh, Mr. Oaks, Oaks Furniture, uh, is wanting us to consider a lease of the balance of the building at Five Proppman. Um, it's the kinda thing we should discuss in closed session, so I don't expect to do any discussion. I'm just kinda reporting it, and then I'll ask for a short closed session after the meeting to discuss that. Finally, I sent out an email. We had a storm drain collapse at Ninth and, uh, and Market. Um, it, it, and I say it's, I have emergency powers if there's a problem to solve the problem. Uh, I, I consider this kind of, uh, an emergency in that I don't think we should wait the month, the month and a half it would take to have specs drawn and advertising for bids and bidding because I think it's a bigger problem than that. Now, since then, we shored up the, the hole, about three feet from this guy's foundation, and, uh, and it's doing a good job of maintaining the, the banks. There's some water continually running through this, 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 after we opened it up. What happened was, it's an old box string, apparently, that was built goodness knows when, and one of the walls is concrete and the floor was concrete, but the other wall was actually stone. So, it was kinda, and I don't know how that happened. But, uh, and then, at some point, they put a half-pipe on top of it to enclose it. Uh, and, and it was suggested to me at, at another meeting today, that was probably done when the house was built, uh, in order to give them some, some, some yard, uh, which would've been, gosh knows, I don't know the age of that house. I could've looked it up, I guess. But, anyway. The source of that water was suspect, so, uh, Alliance tested it and it had residual chlorine in it, very low amount of chlorine, but enough to have us check. So, we started to dug some potholes up the street and found higher levels of chlorine as we, as we, as we went up the hill. Ran their camera up there and found exactly kinda where the water was coming into this storm pipe and are trying to find the source of the leak now. Um, it, before, I think we need to fix the leak before we fix the drain. And, uh, and, and so, hopefully, they will have that fixed tomorrow, and, uh, we have a contract, uh, for, with, for, for the contractor to get in and, and install a new pipe and everything will follow into place. But, uh, that's kinda where that stands. So, rather than, uh, doing it without your authority, I put the, uh, ordinance for entering into the contract on the agenda tonight, just so it has your, your blessing, and would ask for two reasons, uh, readings, because we can get it fixed.
Is this a isolated issue or are we gonna have to look at all our storm drains everywhere? I mean, is there any opinion on that or?
If we had run a camera up it, we wouldn't have, you would've seen that it's a weird construction, but, you know, it, it's just one of those, when you dig a hole.
But, the problem is just right in front of that house. It doesn't continue on the same construction.
No, it goes in, we're gonna, we're gonna replace the entire reach from a concrete inlet to concrete inlet. It's just this one 100-foot stretch, 170-foot stretch. And, uh, above it, it's all concrete, and below it, it's all concrete. That concludes our.
Any questions, anyone? All right. Great. Uh, I'm going to staff reports, Eric.
Tremendous amounts to report.
Probably more of note, I know some of you have probably been made aware, we had an incident, uh, involving a, a false impersonation of a police officer on Tuesday. Uh, we're still looking for suspect information on that, but, uh, I can certainly elaborate on that if you need. Uh, also, I'm looking at proposing an ordinance tonight to restrict, uh, parking on Fourth Street that would eliminate some of the backup that we have during, during school hours on Fourth Street between Jefferson and Washington, and that'll be a little later in the, on the agenda, but if anybody's has any questions for now, I'd be happy to answer those.
Can you just point out that you consulted with both property owners and the school on that?
Correct. Correct. Valley, Valley School and, and, uh, many of the property owners on the west side of the street. I didn't contact the, the property owners on the east side of the street, uh, but this would be, uh, affecting the west side of the street, and, uh, believe everybody's in favor. Uh, you know, we would obviously have to use the, uh, resident parking ordinance that we passed a couple of years ago to allow for some of the residents there that actually park on the street. Uh, but the school is in favor of it. They're certainly supportive of, of finding parking spaces for the Valley children that , that drive, and hopefully, it will eliminate people parking on both sides of Fourth Street and open up some of the traffic there through, through the day. Uh, and again, I know, we can discuss that more when it comes up on the, on the agenda. Um, did wanna to follow up. I know we had the, uh, the 2007 Charger that's been on the, uh, staff report for the last couple of months. It was in the, in the shop. We got the, uh, upper part of the engine rebuilt, uh, a couple of months ago. We got it back, had it on the street for a couple of days, and it started messing up again. We towed it back to the, to the shop, and they think now that it's the, the lower half of the engine and it's probably going to be too cost prohibitive to repair, so, uh, I'm gonna look at, at some numbers in my budget and hopefully be able to come back quickly with, with some type of proposal for a, uh, budget amendment to be able to purchase a couple of cars yet in this budget year.
Questions, anyone?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Petrie?
Yep.
I think everything in my report is pretty self-explanatory. Um, I just wanted to point out that we have, um, been seeing an increase in the number of people coming in for certificates of appropriateness, and our process for exempting some reviews has taken place, and I think successfully so. Um, there's a few little kinks, but I think just some monitoring of the projects, I think, will make it work really well, um, for, for a lot of people that are just doing your basic maintenance and, um, trying to keep their properties up. So, I'm, I'm pleased with how it's going so far. It's only been a month, but so far, I think it is, is working the way it was intended to work. Any questions? Yes.
Go ahead, John.
Go ahead. What exactly is a mini-retreat? I mean, you're going to the lake?
It means we're not going anywhere or having fancy food, and it's not a regularly-scheduled meeting. How about that? No, no fun at the lake or anything like that. Just a, a couple of hours on a, maybe on a Saturday, here.
I guess on the occupancy parameters, you had what, nine approved, ten failed, and six pending?
Yes. Uh, I know that seems like a lot, doesn't it? Um, you know, a, a permit can fail for, or an inspection can fail for a number of reasons, and it just means that they're gonna go back, they'll have a list of things that they have to fix, and, and they'll go back and they'll get those fixed, and it'll be fine. Um, there's nothing, I think, alarming about that. It, it does happen. Um, I, I think Bob and I have an understanding that once he goes in and takes a look at things, unless, when he goes back, there's something really crazy that's happened, he's not gonna re-inspect every little issue and keep having to go back. He just wants to get the basics covered, and that's what he'll look at when he goes back a second time. So, I expect all of those to eventually get done. The pending just means that the inspections haven't been scheduled, is all that means, that they've come in and those inspections haven't been scheduled.
Do we have a fifth member yet?
We don't. Um, I sent out a couple of, of volunteer, uh, application, I don't know what we really wanna call an application. We sent those out, haven't got anything back, but we have a couple of people that have expressed interest, so, um, hopefully, we will. So far, we've had enough people at the two meetings that we were able to conduct business, so I'm pleased with that.
Steve.
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
Last month, uh, Flynn Drilling came, performed their annual inspection of the wells. Uh, we have been seeing an increase in pressure on our wells down at the wellhouse. Uh, they're recommending some type of pigging or lines cleaning, uh, sometime in the near future. I'll be working on numbers for that. Uh, at the beginning of last month, our computer that operates the water treatment plant crashed. Uh, we called around, tried to get prices, get it figured out, what we could do. Uh, some SCADA providers were looking at somewhere in the $5,000 to $7,000 range for the repairs. Uh, Alliance's IT department came down from Columbia, brought some computers, got it working. Uh, took them two days, but they got it. So, no, no out-of-pocket expense. Uh, that being said, uh, starting Monday, well, starting last week, installation of our new SCADA system began, and it was completed today. Uh, staff received about a half a day of training in operations and the benefits of the new SCADA system, and, uh, I think everybody's really happy with it, so.
So, anybody wants to, uh, see it in action, can contact you.
Yes.
Stop by and take a look at it.
Yeah.
Neat.
I encourage everyone, so.
I have one question, Steve.
Yes.
Um, first of all, you, every report that Alliance submits is very professional, very clear, very easy to read, and thank you for making it like that.
Thank you.
Uh, under the, the heading "Safety," it said "Safety meeting topic for the period for first day above one packages of hazard communication and global harmonization." I am curious to know what the heck global harmonization is.
Global harmonization has to do with MSDSs being converted to SDSs. That's material safety data sheets. Uh, material safety data sheets is all the information you need to know about any material.
But, Alliance calls that global harmonization. I love that.
Yeah. They're changing them to SDS, which is, you know?
Yeah.
And they're, they have the exact same format. They never had a format before that was consistent, and now, everything.
So, now, everything will be the same all over the world?
Yeah. Everyone else in the world was consistent except that.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Steve, when are they going to, uh, they start on the new well?
No. I met with, last week, I met with DNR. They came down, Ann Cochran and, uh, Flynn Drilling. They came down, did an inspection of the wellfield, uh, found a site, Cochran's designing it, and they're gonna be submitting, uh, us the plans before they submit it to DNR. Okay. Once they get the plans back from DNR, it, it won't be long at all.
Okay. Great.
Thanks, Steve.
And tomorrow, we'll be working on Ninth Street, trying to locate the source of the water.
Good deal. You're gonna have a lot of issues. You're gonna be about like you did the other day as far as traffic?
Yeah, we're gonna be on one side.
Yeah, that was good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you have the, uh...
Uh, Gary submitted his report. Date's still out. Uh, Gary would've been here tonight, but, uh, he got sick today. So, yeah. But, uh, I think, you know, major work has been, you know, at this time of year, potholes start growing like weeds, and they have to, have to fill them. They've been, they've been doing that. Um, the, uh, the gas company was kinda repairing some of the, you know, they dug these little holes off the city, and they weren't doing a good job of repairing them, so they've been coordinating with them to make sure they're doing it properly, and, uh, other than that, it's pretty self-explanatory.
Got the pothole hotline filled on?
Well, uh, I think anybody who wants to call.
Just call City Hall.
883-5400, whoever answers the phone, take the message and get it into the field.
I don't think that's the number on 990.
I think it's a street shed number.
Is it? Oh, okay.
It's, it's 1-800-POTHOLE. Pothole, yeah. Yeah. I wonder what we can get with that.
Right.
Probably calling us, they have, they have an answering fee, I guess, so.
One of the, the things noted is they pushed up the salt pile and covered it for summer storage. You know, it's, I think that, uh, the city staff should be commended for making our salt last this summer, and that was a very challenging, and I think they've done a really good job doing that.
Well, they mixed a lot of sand in with it. They helped a lot this quarter, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
They did do a good job.
They did a great job on the streets this winter.
You have enough left for one snow?
Hopefully, they're, hopefully, they'll just carry it over in the summer.
Yeah.
Mark, is summer they gonna stagger to street sweep it downtown earlier in the morning?
Yeah, we try and get on it before the cars get there, yeah. We did a couple of, like, you know, Fourth Street didn't get done very well because they go out after eight o'clock, the kids are there, so, uh, they have to, a couple of places we need to get out early.
You know, I think I've asked this question before, and, uh, is there some reason why we can't send someone out at five o'clock in the morning and start sweeping streets?
Because of adjusting their workout.
Yeah. That would seem like to be the ideal thing to do.
We get complaints when the sweeper goes out at five in the morning.
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I was just asking, how loud is the sweeper?
Someone wake me up.
How loud?
If I wasn't already up.
Well, after you're to bed, we got out at five o'clock.
I know.
We got complaints.
I think some of the residents downtown would not appreciate that.
All right, there you go.
But, if we get out by 6:30 or 7:00, we're, we're ahead of traffic, and we can get down there pretty, pretty quickly.
Do you have an ordinance in St. Genevieve said you can't start work for a certain time of the morning?
No.
No, somebody's...
There's a, or...
Construction work.
I think it's six o'clock.
I'm not sure what time it is, but there is.
Okay. Any more questions about?
I have a one second at my house in the week.
We'll, uh, back catch you. See the report from the fire department?
Yeah.
I will, uh, have that official appointment ready by next week. I missed their meeting, but, um, we'll set that up and get together with them. Sandra.
Evening, everyone. Um, in the month of February, we had 833 guests through the Welcome Center, so we're starting out the year on a strong note. That's, um, 22 percent up over last February, and for us, the weather was about the same. We actually closed two days this year, and last year, um, was about the same, um, and we're up 37 percent year-to-date over last year's number, so hoping for a strong 2015. Um, terms of outreach, on March 10th, we hosted the Southeast Missouri River Heritage Group, um, and it's through our, uh, participation in that group, which is all of the tourism departments throughout the, I think, uh, 11 or 12 counties in Southeast Missouri. Um, we were able to have St. Genevieve Businesses and Attractions represented at no charge in the Cape Home and Garden Show last week. Um, and then I just got back from participating with the Missouri Division of Tourism's booth at the Travel South Conference, and that was a meeting with group tour operators who are interested in building new itineraries to Missouri attractions. Um, and if you haven't seen these and are interested, um, we had some great coverage in both the 573 magazine and the, um, Show Me Missouri magazine, so if you're interested to see those after the meeting, I'd be happy to show those to you, and we have copies of 573 down at the Welcome Center. Uh, local community, as Kara mentioned earlier, the Welcome Center is this week playing host to over 100 pieces of art from our two local high schools as part of the St. Genevieve Art Guild's 2015 Student Art Competition. Um, true to our heritage, we have some incredible talent out there, so, um, the Welcome Center is open all day tomorrow, and it's gonna be open late tomorrow night because we're participating in the art walk, so if there's any parents out there or grandparents who wanna see this artwork, please come down and see it, um, during the day or in the evening and take part in the art walk. Uh, the "Welcome to St. Genevieve" sign at the Highway 61 entrance to Mississippi Lime has finally been installed, and, um, despite the weather, the sign stayed in the box for a couple of months before it could get installed, and, um, this was a joint effort between our tourism program and the Mississippi Lime. Um, for my part, it came out of a grant, and they, uh, footed the bill with this 50 percent match, so it was a great, um, partnership effort, and it looks a lot better than the other one, which we're not sure, but it was hand-painted, so we think at least 30 years old. We're not quite sure. Maybe earlier, or older than that. Um, there's gonna be another new business in downtown, starting in April. Um, Ghost Tours of St. Genevieve will be opening on the first week of April, um, offering ghost tours, guided ghost tours of St. Genevieve's on Friday and Saturday night. Um, at the March 17th Tourism Advisory Council meeting, the group selected three priority issues, uh, one of those being transportation, one being river access and beautification, and one being, um, seeking a wildlife area out near the levee, some sort of a designation out in there, that area, uh, at least exploring that. Uh, we have started the program development for Saturday's... and it's through our participation in that group, which is all of the tourism departments throughout the, I think, 11 or 12 counties in Southeast Missouri. We were able to have St. Genevieve Businesses and Attractions represented at no charge in the Cape Home and Garden Show last week. And then I just got back from participating with the Missouri Division of Tourism booth at the Travel South Conference, and that was a meeting with group tour operators who are interested in building new itineraries to Missouri attractions. And if you haven't seen these and are interested, we had some great coverage in both the 573 magazine and the Show Me Missouri magazine, so if you're interested to see those after the meeting, I'd be happy to show those to you, and we have copies of 573 down at the Welcome Center. Local community, as Cara mentioned earlier, the Welcome Center is this week playing host to over 100 pieces of art from our two local high schools as part of the St. Genevieve Art Guild's 2015 Student Art Competition. True to our heritage, we have some incredible talent out there, so the Welcome Center is open all day tomorrow, and it's going to be open late tomorrow night because we're participating in the art walk, so if there's any parents out there or grandparents who want to see this artwork, please come down and see it during the day or in the evening and take part in the art walk. The Welcome to St. Genevieve sign at the Highway 61 entrance to Mississippi Lime has finally been installed, and despite the weather, the sign stayed in the box for a couple of months before it could get installed, and this was a joint effort between our tourism program and the Mississippi Lime. For my part, it came out of a grant, and they footed the bill with this 50% match, so it was a great partnership effort, and it looks a lot better than the other one, which we're not sure, but it was hand painted, so we think at least 30 years old, we're not quite sure. Maybe earlier, or older than that. There's going to be another new business in downtown, starting in April. Ghost Tours of St. Genevieve will be opening on the first week of April, offering ghost tours, guided ghost tours of St. Genevieve's on Friday and Saturday night. At the March 17th Tourism Advisory Council meeting, the group selected three priority issues, one of those being transportation, one being river access and beautification, and one being seeking a wildlife area out near the levee, some sort of a designation out in there, that area, at least exploring that. We have started the program development for Saturdays in St. Genevieve. Basically, this is any Saturday between May 23rd, which is Memorial Day, and September 5th, which is Labor Day weekend. If there's anyone out there listening who would like to participate, either as a musician or doing a demonstration, or dressing in period-appropriate attire for French colonial and greeting people on the streets, would love to have you contact the Welcome Center, and if you don't have a costume, we'll find one for you. So, don't be shy, call us, we'd love to have you. We're just trying to create more going in, going on in downtown St. Genevieve, especially on the weekends, especially on Saturdays, when we have more foot traffic down here, things that people can see and hear and do, creating more of an atmosphere. And as Cara said, tomorrow night is the March 4th Friday Art Walk, hosted by the Downtown Renewal Group. In addition, we have two other events coming up in April besides the sidewalk sale. There's going to be on April 19th, and 18th and 19th, excuse me, the Rue de Vins Jour de la Terre, which is their celebration of Earth Day, and on the 25th and 26th is the annual Ecole de Soldat, the School of the Soldier, which we host down at the Jour de Fête grounds by the Moses Austin House, and that group meets and has their seminars in the Welcome Center, so we're always glad to see them come back. Some great photo ops. The sessions are open to the public on Saturday, and, um, and they are free, and the reenactors also invite people to come out and wander around their campsites and look at things and maybe bring the kids and learn a thing or two. So, that's my report. Are there any questions?
Where are we, Travel South Conference? Is that at Bay Hall?
It was, no, it was in Shreveport, Louisiana.
Oh, okay.
Yes. And so, um, yeah, so there's no easy way to get to Shreveport, I'm going to just tell you that.
I'm aware of that.
You've got to fly to Dallas and rent a car, pay exorbitant airfare, so I was doing the fly-drive routine. But it was really good, nine-minute appointments, so you like live your life over again, and it's like Groundhog Day, nine-minute appointments, meeting with people who were interested in building itineraries, and I was partnering up with Hannibal, Missouri, myself and Cape Girardeau, and we were kind of pushing the whole, you know, Great River Road, Mississippi River, River Towns experience. Thanks for asking. All right, thank you.
Thanks. Mayor reports.
Tom?
Well, I've got one. The Park Board met Monday evening, and we had a robust and spirited discussion. The Park Board is made up of dedicated citizens that meet once a month to discuss all things that have to do with our parks and recreation areas that the city owns, and a couple of the park board members have been on the board for about two decades, about 20 years, and I should tell you, they are some frustrated, good citizens. Over the years, they've, they've promoted ideas and talked about what, what the parks need and maintenance issues and, and capital expense projects, and I think, you know, they've never really gotten much of what they've ever asked for, and they're just, they're frustrated. They have a passion to provide activities for, for youths and adults alike in the city of St. Genevieve. So, our discussion was focused primarily on the cost savings of the ball fields being taken over by the school system, and how much money does that save the city of St. Genevieve? How much money does that free up out of the park budget? So, we talked about that. We talked about how much money the park tax generates, and how much general revenue has to go in and support that so we can meet our budget number. So, last year, the park tax fell about $86,000 short of our budget item for Parks Department, so $86,000 came from general revenue to support the parks. And so, as Martin mentioned earlier, it's going to be difficult, really, for us to understand the economic value of, of cost savings, because we're not laying people off, we're, we're not selling equipment that was used to maintain the parks, or, excuse me, the ball diamonds. We're just reallocating those man-hours, so those, those employees will be doing other things, so it's really an enhancement of services for the citizens of St. Genevieve. One thing that we do know pretty much exactly how much cost savings there's going to be, and that is electricity, as Martin said. So, you know, I think the Park Board understands clearly that we're not going to, we don't have the money to build swimming pool, you know, we don't have a couple million dollars that we're going to be able to pop on the swimming pool in the near future. We don't really have $100,000 to replace or repair the tennis courts. I don't pay real close attention to our playground equipment and other very, you know, aspects of the various parks that we have. Well, the Park Board does. These members go out and they look at it, they understand what's going on, and they've been told no over the years, and they're very frustrated, and I'm frustrated for them, and these people keep coming back to their meetings, month after month after month, and they discuss the issues, but they don't have any way to affect getting anything done, right? So, as, as we have in our packet tonight, I would, I would like to see that we gave, that the Board of Aldermen would allow the Park Board some discretionary funds. I'm not talking about $100,000, I'm talking $5,000 for them to spend the way that they voted in their commission on what they think they need, right? So, they're looking at the playground equipment, they're looking at landscaping, they're looking at all the issues related to parks that we're probably not looking at, that Darren's probably not looking at, because he's got other stuff to do. I mean, he's busy doing his other things. I just think that would be a reward to the Park Board and a relief to them, that, hey, they're not getting much, but listen, something's better than nothing, and I think it would really be a benefit, I think they would do a good job, and it'd be a benefit to everyone in St. Genevieve to let these people that care about this, that pardon me, are focused on this, spend a little bit of money and do some small projects that they want to do. So, I would just encourage everybody to give that some thought quickly, and let's free up the, that $5,000 is about what we, in electricity, so we know we won't, we're not, you know, going to go in a hole. We're just taking that from one line item, put it on another line item, and give the Park Board a small amount of money to use at their discretion, and I think it'd just be a great idea. I mean, we have a Park Board because we have a park tax, and we have to have a Park Board, but those members don't have to keep coming back every month and discussing the same issue that we can't really do anything. So, I talked in the circle about this, but it's a, it's a passionate thing, and several of the Park Board members are very passionate about wanting to do the right things, and they feel like the city doesn't, the city being the Board of Aldermen, doesn't give them that opportunity, so.
When there's some talk about some enhancement to the disco or something like that?
Well, you know, I guess my, my thoughts on that is the Park Board, let's give them $5,000, and then they can have a discussion, they can have a vote, and figure out what to spend that money on. I wouldn't spend a dime on frisbee golf, right, because I've never seen anybody doing it. I talk to them, well, I saw somebody do it once, I saw somebody do it once. Well, you know, our job is to stretch every dollar as wide as we can and touch as many citizens as we can. If the Park Board is in tune with the frisbee golf, whatever they think, I, I don't think we're going to give them the keys to the vault by giving them $5,000. I think that, you know, and listen, I hope they can do good things, and I hope that in the future, we can budget a line item every year to give them some discretionary money.
Well, my son, he likes that disco. He played it down in Springfield, Florida.
Okay, and let's stop misunderstanding something there. Bill number 4025, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the city of St. Genevieve fiscal year budget relating to the Park Board. Expenditures, electricity last year was $8,000, we now change it to $5,522, and then on the next line, 8015 park creation, recreation equipment, nothing last year, this year we're $2,478.
Twenty-two was what we spent so far.
Okay, what about-
We haven't spent out of that $8,000, it's $2,478.
And that's marked as park recreation equipment?
Well, I, I was going to say, when I first had this discussion, coming in, out of the Park Board meeting, we were talking about equipment. And I found out what the dollar amount was, I called Darren and said, what can you do with this amount of money? And he said, I can't buy any equipment, but I can do some landscaping. So, I said, okay, without telling him to put it in landscaping, so that ought to be amended, that line item should be 6105, stone, gravel, sand, and marge.
So, how do we, how do we, could we make, what will we have to do to an ordinance that says, that gives the Park Board some discretionary spending money? Or do we just, does that just manage in-house, and we don't have to do anything?
No, it's got to be budgeted. But you're going to have to decide, again, to me, there's no line item, whatever you feel like spending it on. They're going to have to decide how they would spend it, and then move it into a property line item.
That's where I'm at. The next step for them would be to identify a project or a series of projects that would come up to that $5,000 mark, and then we would have a budget amendment that we could approve or deny.
So, whatever you put in there, you know, is coming out of our general revenue, our anticipated carryover.
But that $5,000 is what we're actually going to save this year, out of this year's budget for electricity.
We're only going to save $2,478.
Now, Monday night, you said that total's $5,000.
I know. It is, the figures that we had on the electric consumption was $5,000, which is what we spent. So, when I came back to the office, sat down with Sue, ran the numbers of the $8,000 that we budgeted for it, we spent $5,522.
So...
Now, the school will now take over, we, we would have been over budget on that line item, because they raised the utility rates.
So, what were we paying in electricity so far this year? It's $5,522, is that what we were paying so far?
In the first quarter with almost no night use.
Well, you have to remember that, that was October-
Oh, excuse me.
October, November.
Right, gotcha.
And October was for September usage, which you still had ball games going on.
Gotcha. So, if we could pull $5,000 out of the budget for the Park Board, it would actually be about $2,500 out of general revenue, and this $2,500 that was left over. Got it. Probably as clear as mud, everybody's not been thinking about this yet, but that's, it'd be okay.
Some of the specialized equipment that the park had for the care of the ball fields, did that get, did that go with the property, or do we still own that, or?
There was, there was very, I mean, we're keeping the gator, we're going to keep it.
Chalk spreader.
Most of, most of that, the Yanks have purchased, I don't know that the city purchased much of that in recent years anyway, drags and that kind of stuff. I think we're going to keep one of the older drags for the, the field down on Third Street.
What about any of those storage buildings down there?
Uh, we never purchased, the city, I don't think the city ever purchased any of them. I think that was all built with the Yanks, or...
Maybe that'd free up some, if we could declare surplus and get rid of it, that'd free up some more money for them or something.
Well, one, one other spot that we might gain a little bit is the fact we are going to gain, we are gaining some labor that will be required this summer in getting those fields ready every year, we may, we may be able to not put on some part-time summer help, so...
But also recall that we're losing $17,500 for the county.
Right. Well, I don't know, I wouldn't say we're losing.
Well, they're not going to do it.
Yeah, but we were spending it, we were spending it on the ball fields.
Well, it was going, they were giving to us because we were maintaining it.
Yeah, but it just passed through our hands, it's not like we got to keep it and hold it into something else.
No, it just went into general revenue.
Yeah, that's right.
It was our, their level of compensation to us, we're taking care of the field.
I think we'll certainly have a better, obviously, we'll have a better idea after this season of where we're going to be able to stand and what we're going to be spending up there, people-wise, labor-wise, and...
I really think we need to do the right thing by the Park Board and, and infuse them with, with some enthusiasm, you know, to get them, get them to...
Well, so, when we get to this item on the agenda, just move the table, so we can consider that.
Gotcha.
Give them a chance to consider.
And the other would be, we will be getting some income off of water usage that we were basically eating before, which was our own, so there'll be some income coming off of that, right?
Yeah, but it goes into the park fund.
Well, that's true.
It's just going to, it's just really difficult to measure, because we haven't ever measured it in the past, so it's a hard thing to put a number on.
Anybody else? Okay. I'll go to the minutes of March 12. Move to approve. Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Resolution 2015-24, resolution authorizing the property located at 472 Merchant Street to be declared surplus property and providing further authority.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Resolution 2015-25, a resolution authorizing the St. Genevieve Tourism Department to apply for a grant from the Marketing Platform Development Grant sponsored by the Missouri Division of Tourism in the amount, in an amount not to exceed $5,000.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Thank you. Resolution 2015-26, a resolution authorizing the St. Genevieve Tourism Department to apply for a grant from the Marketing Cooperative Advertising Grant sponsored by the Missouri Division of Tourism in an amount not, not to exceed $4,000.
Move to approve. Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, thank you. Old Business, Bill number 4015, First Street.
No.
That should be Second. Second, oh, we'll have to redtable.
Right.
First Street.
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Municipal Ban.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
We need a second reading on that, being ready to start up.
Isn't this our second reading of it?
No, that's our first reading. We tabled it.
We went on, we gave them to see the last week, too, because we really went on a agenda, so this is going to be first.
They're not scheduled to give their first payout until May 15.
First payout is...
So, I don't mind doing a second reading.
415, I don't know.
May 15 is the first payout, so...
No, let's go. I mean, it's all right.
Please.
Okay. Bill number 4021, second reading?
An ordinance authorizing the City of St. Genevieve to enter into an intergovernmental cooperation agreement for the investment of public funds for the Missouri Securities Investment Program.
Move to approve. Second.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Huck?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Seven yeses, zero no's, one absent, Bill number 4021 now becomes ordinance 3958.
Thank you. Bill number 4022, second reading?
An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the mayor to enter into a financial advisory agreement with Joy A. Howard doing business as WM Financial Strategies to act as financial advisor as set forth in the attached agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Hold on.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Huck?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman, Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4022 now becomes ordinance 3959.
Bill Number 4023, first reading.
In ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bear Engineering LLC of Perryville, Missouri for construction inspection services for the St. Genevieve River Beautification and Hiking Trail Project in an amount not to exceed $49,500.
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Bill Number 4024, first reading.
In ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri, authorizing a two-hour parking restriction on the west side of Fourth Street between Jefferson and Washington Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, Bill Number 4025, first reading.
Is this the one that we're going to table?
Oh, okay.
Make a motion to table this.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor of tabling Bill Number 4025?
Aye.
opposed? Bill Number 4026, first reading.
In ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal with Vern Bowman Contracting Company of St. Genevieve, Missouri for emergency repair of the storm sewer on Ninth Street in an amount not to exceed $14,425.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed?
Make a motion for a second reading of Bill Number 4026.
Second.
All in favor, second reading?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, Bill Number 4026, second reading.
In ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, authorizing the mayor to enter into a proposal with Vern Bowman Contracting Company of St. Genevieve, Missouri for emergency repair of the storm sewer on Ninth Street in an amount not to exceed $14,425.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Your call.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill Number 4026 now becomes ordinance 3960.
Thank you. Public comments anymore? Anybody? Oh, sir.
Hello, I'm Bob Brown. I'd like to thank all of you guys for taking that yellow house and tearing it down. Thank you. And Rock did an excellent job from start to finish. I mean, he stayed on it, professional. Thank you from the, I mean, everybody appreciates that. And making Fifth Street one-way and no parking on the west side, that's worked out really good. I mean, it's 100% better. And there was another thought I had is when people park like right on the corners, on the curvatures of it, they'll come right up like that. Paint those red, and if they park on there, give them a ticket.
Back so far where they're not supposed to.
Wherever the no parking is?
Sure.
Paint the corners. You guys get to paint, I'll do it for, I'll, seriously, I'll do it. I mean, you give me the paint, I'll go paint them.
Okay. Well, thank you. I know it took a while to get the house down.
Hey, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for maintaining it. I'll keep going until it's settled.
Well, hopefully, I'll find somebody who wants it before, before the grass grows.
And there, some sort of restriction, chief, on the, how close you can park to in there?
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet?
Okay, I'll get it.
Anybody else? Great, okay. Other business, we have approval of a street closure, Progress Parkway from St. Genevieve, from the St. Genevieve County Community Center for the Night Glow 5K on April 11.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Approval of a request from the St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital to use the Main Street Park for the opening ceremony of the Art of Women's Health 5K Run Walk on Friday, April the 24th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? And approval of a request from St. Genevieve County Memorial Hospital for a street closure request, Main and Jefferson Streets for the Art of Women's Health 5K Run Walk on Friday, April 24th.
How long?
Is this the same thing?
It's the same event.
The one's for 5:00 to 7:00, and the other one doesn't have a time.
Right.
I think it was just, I think she explained to me it was just going to be at the beginning of the walk when they're all standing there, and then they take off.
So do we make the restriction? You know, because it doesn't have a time.
I think we can work with them on that.
Last year, we sent hurricanes out when they were ready, so you could put them out.
Oh, you did, it's like, oh, bigger deal.
We can work with them.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay. Anything else? I have a motion going to a closed session regarding real estate.
I'll make the motion. To go in the closed session. Discuss real estate. Another thing.
Alderman Codwell?
Yes.
Alderman Couch?
Yes.
Alderman John Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Hook?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ross?
Alderman Ross.
Alderman Ross.
I'm still here.